Good morning. We are going to call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a prayer. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance on this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the November 18th public hearing and commissioners' meeting.
Second the motion.
Motion second. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes. Next, we have public comment regarding pending resolutions. Is there any public comment regarding pending resolutions? Seeing none, we move on to resolutions. Kicking us off, Jeremy Sinko from Santeri Engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Also from Santeri Engineer's office.
Good way to kick off this week, I guess. One resolution for consideration today, and that's authorizing the Santeri Engineer to certify delinquent utility account balances in accordance with Sections 6103.02 and 6117.02 of the Ohio Revised Code.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next up is Holly Mirren from HR.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personnel changes resolution today, we have five rate increases, two in sanitary, one in IT, one in senior and adult services, and one in commissioners, one date effective correction in sanitary, two leave of absence, one in maintenance, and one in sanitary, and one resignation in maintenance.
Make a motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Motion second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like we don't have anybody from economic development just yet, so we'll move on to finance. Brett Thomas?
Man, quiet and quick today, huh? All right. I only have eight for you. So, first one is amending the appropriation measures. This is just our routine increases for appropriations. Our second resolution is transfers of appropriations. Our third resolution is expenditures for various, expenditure adjustments for various Our fourth resolution is cash transfers for various funds. This is actually funds that are coming from the treasurer's office. We have a capital improvement that's happening in the, in the first floor of this building. Some things that need to be restructured here that have been identified for a little while, and the treasurer is kindly bringing in a share to help pay for that. Our fifth resolution is creation of the Victim Assistance Fiscal Year 26 Fund and authorizing appropriations. This grant is for the total, a total spend of $53,886.29. It's actually two grants together. Our local match on this ends up being $9,737.25 of that $53,000. Our sixth resolution is accepting a proposal from ISA, International Strategic Analysis, to conduct an independent demographic analysis and forecast from Medina County. I believe you guys started discussing this last week for a discussion session. This is the result of that, the acceptance of the proposal from ISA for $7,000. They will provide a population study for us based off of outside information to allow you guys a little bit better insights to compare against what the Ohio Department of Development has provided from their study, so that we have a little bit of contrasting information for forward-looking in future years. Our seventh resolution is expenses for county officials. We have Erin going to the winter conference for the County Commissioners Association in Columbus. And then for maintenance, we also have Stephen going to the same conference. And then on our eighth resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $1,455,691.26.
I'll make a motion to approve the eight resolutions.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to mention that on that, the ISA proposal for the demographic that also, and with the request of Brett and so forth, there's conversation with him, an addendum to looking at the permissive taxes and fees forecasting for us, since we're becoming, we'll have to be more reliant upon our sales tax and some of those other fees that we get, and less reliant upon property taxes, as evidenced by what's been going on at the legislature. But it'll give us a better forecast as we move years ahead.
Yep.
It's a great idea to add that, and that is within the scope of and its capabilities of that consultant.
I had a wonderful conversation with him to try and make sure that as we're looking forward for demographics, we also need to understand what that is going to lead us with an economic impact, since we'll become less and less reliant on property tax over that time span.
Great. All right. Additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison? Yes. Next up, Matt Springer, County Administrator.
Good morning. I have two resolutions. The first one is approving a one-year contract extension with ERG. This is for the Household Hazardous Waste Recycling Program at the Solid Waste District. And then the second resolution is approving fee increases for the Medina County Building Department. These fee increases would take effect January 1 of 2026. As you know, we've held two different public hearings to discuss these fee schedule increases.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Motion second. Any discussion? I think we, in the hearings, we did consider this, but relative to the increases over the same period of time in, in building costs, we're, we're still, I think, being very conservative with, with those movements and appreciate the collaboration of the people who participated in those hearings. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we holding off, were we expecting development on the revolving loan funds?
I haven't heard from them this morning.
If, okay, great. Thanks, man. But we will move on to department updates, because Shannon is ready to go. This is the Natty County Public Transit, Shannon Ryan. Go ahead, Shannon.
Good morning. I have one resolution, approving our 2026 Medina County Public Safety Plan. This is a requirement of the FTA and now ODOT.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
We're moving along quickly, and I'll move along quickly as well. Just some highlights for the October numbers. Ridership really climbed quite a bit compared to last year and our, and our averages, so good month for ridership. We continue to keep costs down, very good numbers when it comes to efficiency as it replaced, as it relates to our cost per mile and our passengers per hour. This is important numbers, as I mentioned, for our efficiency, but our team is doing a really good job of getting people to, where they need to go, and with zero trip denials, which, and going to the, the annual conference, our OPTA Conference, a lot of folks are having trouble finding enough room for everybody, but our micro, micro transit, micro transit, our MC Flex is working for us, and I found out for Delaware, too. Delaware County's finding advantage recently of it, too, so got to share some good news that way. Some of the things that we're looking at is our annual agency contracts for '26. We're working with the other number of different agencies. I'm waiting for a few to come back for agency contracts for our per-mile cost to each agency. We're looking at a 50 cent per mile increase, which is a little bit, well, quite a bit different than our fully allocated cost per mile. So, we're able to help the agencies to provide service in '26, but there will be an increase in our cost per mile, which will help us meet the cost increases that we've seen and our local match for our grants. So, very important. I don't have anything else to report, other than we did order our buses and talking to the vendor at the conference, looks like we're looking at the March-April timeline for our four vehicles coming in.
That's gotten a lot better since the last go-round.
Yeah. Two years is a lot less than, yeah, it's a lot less than two years. Now it'll be four to six months.
Great.
So.
Super. Questions?
No.
Great. Good job.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, you, too.
Thank you.
Next up, Debbie Kiley.
Good morning.
Good morning, Debbie.
First, three resolutions for your consideration this morning is, the first is a resolution authorizing a sub-award agreement for TANF emergency services for the next step-up shelter with Medina Metropolitan Housing Authority. The other is assigning authority to the Director of Job and Family Services to serve as the board's designee with authority to request and sign inner-county adjustment agreements on behalf of Medina County. And the last one is just a renewal of our foster family software services.
I'll make a motion to approve the three resolutions.
Second the motion.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Updates.
All right.
Since my last visit was a little financially depressing, I thought I'd keep my updates today light, thankful, but nonetheless important. The federal shutdown is over, and nearly all of our SNAP recipients have received their full benefits as of last week. We received a report from the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services. About 20 individuals did not get those benefits, so the team yesterday manually pushed those through, so the county is now made whole, so our recipients have them. Our toy drive for our children in foster care was also a tremendous success. If you recall, it was a shredding for Santa event. We shredded 5,800 pounds of paper for the community, and the truck operator said it was the most shredding he's ever done for a first-time event, so he's apparently been around the block a while, so people, people really took advantage of that. We raised nearly $2,500 in donations and over $500 in gift cards, not to mention our ground-floor conference room is awash in gifts. There are, you can't even use the conference room, it's, it's full of gifts. So, we are so thankful for the generosity of the community. Also, our Coats for Kids event was also a great success. We were able to visit with over 100 families. We distributed over 180 coats, hats, and gloves, and thanks to the toy drive, they saw an immense donation of stuffed animals, which is typical. So, what they did is they shared those with the Coats for Kids team, so along with coats, gloves, and hats, the kids also got a stuffed animal to take home. So, again, we are thankful for the generous donations to help keep the children in our community warm this season. And on that note of generosity and gratitude this week of Thanksgiving, I had shared this note with my staff last week, and I quote, "Next week is Thanksgiving. While the world seems a bit turbulent at times and our agency faces pressures from both federal and state forces, I am deeply grateful for the team I have under this roof called JFS. Thank you for showing up on a bad day. Thank you for saying when a good day goes bad, and thank you for caring for the 180,000-plus residents of Medina County. Even though you might not touch each one, you reach each one in some way with the work you do. That's important stuff. Remember that." So, while I prepared these remarks for today, it seemed equally important to share that message with you, the board. Thank you for showing up on a bad day and saying when a good day goes bad, and thank you for being a strong supporter of my office. I often tell many of my directors, I am so blessed to have the board that I do have. Thank you for hearing me when I share the good, the bad, and the frustrating. I am tremendously grateful for the board. And I'm going to say the same thing about Administrator Springer. Thank you for showing up on a bad day, for saying when a good day goes bad, for supporting me when I share the good, the bad, and the frustrating. I am truly grateful and thankful for your leadership and support. And Sarah, I was hoping you were going to be here. Thank you for your continued reporting on issues I share with you here, as well as directly. I appreciate having a partner with our local paper and person. The work you do is important. Thank you for that. So, those are my updates. My best wishes for a safe and, a safe and happy holiday in whatever way you celebrate.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was great. Questions?
No.
Thank you. And Matt, do good days go bad here? Just curious.
Sometimes bad days go good.
Right. Okay. And then we did have Economic Development making appearance here, so we will go back to our resolutions before public comment, because I think there's two revolving loan fund applications to act on. So, we have Brandon Gibson from Economic Development. Good morning, Brandon.
Good morning, commissioners. Thanks for having us. Thanks for waiting while Economic Development work gets done in the meantime.
We're happy that, that wheel continues to turn.
Yes. First one we have, just because they have to be in chronological order, that's the way we have to apply to the state, because that's the way they were approved by the board. And thanks to two board members of the RLF that are here, Debbie Kiley and Matt Springer, for their incredible work. It's, it is a lot of work and a lot of planning to get all of these in order. But the first one is approving a revolving loan application to the state of Ohio and approving a loan to Suen Corporation doing business as the House of Funan. That's House of Funan on the square. They have some improvements and renovations inside of the building that they need to make. This would be a $250,000 loan over 10-year period. The second one, or did you want to wait on the first one and discuss?
No.
Okay. Second one is very similar, approving a revolving loan fund application to the state of Ohio and approving a revolving loan fund to Yasu LLC. That's Great Oaks Tavern down in Wadsworth, and that would be a $500,000 loan over 15 years. That's some building renovation expansion in the front. They have a patio and some equipment that they have to add as well to expand that business. They've operated through COVID and done pretty well, and now they're expanding and renovating the current space that they have. The reason that these are approving a revolving loan fund application to the state and approving the loan to the company is we don't have $750,000 in the revolving loan fund right now, so we have to ask the state of Ohio to top up that fund, so we can give it out to companies in Medina County.
Any additional?
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison? Yes.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you. Have a great Thanksgiving.
Same to you.
Thanks. Next up is public comment. Is anyone here for public comment? Anything? No? No? Moving on to discussion session. Matt? Nothing? John? Anything? Debbie? Nothing else? Economic Development? No? Anything for discussion? No? Okay. Colleen? Steve Hambley?
Yes. I just want to update, the Salarway's Policy Committee met last week. We, the, given instructions to the consultant to move forward, the, we talked at some length in time about the TAC recommendations regarding the diversion, if you, if you will, the, with Brunswick and the issue that, and from a policy end, they are going to be working on a stratagem or an approach to it, as to what, what fees that would need to be covered in order to grant that kind of, under a new plan. So, we had a lot of discussion on that, and we'll be moving forward. We have a meeting in December. Can't remember the date, but it's, yeah, 3rd week in December.
18th, I think.
Yeah. But we'll be meeting and talking about that, but we'll have something from the, the consultant on that.
Great.
So, we're doing that. The second, we did receive a thank you note from Main Street Medina. We, they used the administration parking lot for, on Sunday, for their horse and carriage rides. It was a two-hour period. It was well-received. The weather cooperated, apparently, good enough for 325 people to be able to, to go around the square and kind of see the benefits of horse and carriages, so, in, in our modern era, and, and they thank us for the use of the administration building parking lot. And the last I wanted to bring up was the NOACA code of regulations. There is a proposal, as I understand, coming from the Governance Committee that involves changing the, the designated positions within the, the voting positions, the NOACA board, and likewise, another proposal to modify the code, so it does not require ratification for that section. I know that you're, you're up to date on that, but there, I guess there's going to be a, a meeting coming forward in two weeks, I think it is?
Yeah, we, we have a regularly scheduled meeting, and I think that's when, December 12.
And they're going to do a special meeting.
Yeah. There was some talk of a special meeting, but the dates were the same, so I'm not sure exactly. I have a, I have a call, I owe a call to Grace Calucci to discuss that in greater detail, but...
Have we seen the text yet?
Of the...
Of the changes that they want to make?
Yes.
There's only the one that I saw that involved, that modifies the ratification requirements.
I do have the text of the other one. I meant to, I'll, I'll make sure you guys get a copy of that.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. But it, it, basically what it does right now, if you look at Medina County's seats, the four seats we have, we have a seat that says County Commissioner. We have a seat that says County Commissioner, parentheses, Engineer.
Right.
We have a seat that says County Commissioner, parentheses, City Representative.
And, and then Township.
And then, and then we have, well, actually, there's a, there's a, I said that wrong. It's not a parentheses Engineer. It's parentheses City Representative, parentheses Township Representative, and then we have an engineer.
And it says Engineer.
Yeah. The, the change would be to make all of those seats essentially designated by the commissioners.
And I, I actually, this is a transportation planning organization, and they are going to remove county engineers from being designated as voting members. I, they leave it to the option of the commissioners.
I don't understand.
But then literally, if a Board of Commissioners, two of the commissioners are at war with the county engineer, who is an independently elected official, if they're, I won't say maybe at war, we'll just say they have disagreements, that they prefer that the, that the engineer not serve on the County Planning Agency for Transportation, they can designate somebody else. And I have a problem, because from the very beginning, county engineers have been part of, even though the contra, if you will, the code of regulations is, requires approval of boards of commissioners.
Right.
It's still, they've always designated a county engineer.
Well, the question...
As a transportation planning official, who is independent of a board, I think is an important voice.
The question, I think, is more pronounced for Geaga County than here, because we have, I, I agree with you, there could be, there is a foreseeable scenario where there are circumstances that cause an engineer to be edged out even in Medina County.
Well, we already know publicly, they've already said they want to edge their engineer.
As a, as a practical matter, in Medina County, though, we were, that wouldn't be how we would use it, but you're right. It could happen. The, the question, though, I guess, is more pointed to Geaga County, because right now they only have three seats, and so historically, those seats have been commissioner seats. Some of them have been filled by other designees, and there was a push last year to amend the bylaws to get an engineer to, to fill that in. It, it became a question for the board about ratifying that change mid-year, which ultimately didn't happen, hasn't happened, which is why I think the accompanying change about proposing not to have to ratify those changes is, is in the mix. But it, it, it was, the, the reason I didn't take any action here on that Geaga County proposal was, it seemed that it was being tailored to, to push out one specific voting member on the NOACA board, who's kind of the squeaky wheel on some things, and frankly, who I think admittedly, our meetings would go much quicker if he weren't there, but I don't think that's the right way to, 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 to take somebody out, and, and the, you know, to the extent the commissioners in Geaga County weren't aligned on how that was going to be handled, and one of them reached out to me and said he wasn't aligned with how that was trying to be handled, I thought, well, there's really no role for NOACA to play to settle a dispute between the Geaga County Commissioners. Your larger point, though, I think is absolutely fair. If there are, if there are four seats, one of those to be designated to the engineer, that makes perfect sense to me. And that's, that's a...
The thing is, it spells out for each county who the representatives are.
Yeah.
Currently. The way they're trying to do it now is that the Board of Commissioners...
Right.
...determine that list, and, and, but they're also trying to change our code of regulations to say that it does not require ratification by all five counties.
The ratification part is a concern for me, too.
And I firmly believe that...
I agree.
That our current code clearly says we can't modify that without all five counties agreeing.
Right. And somehow, that's where the special meeting would come in, and I'm not real clear on what that, that those circumstances are.
Do we need to get the, the, I, I would like a, a legal opinion from the county prosecutor's office.
Yeah.
And share that with the NOACA board, because I don't believe that they can go ahead and get around the ratification requirement.
Right. I, I don't see how they can without ratifying, change the bylaws that says that the bylaws are being changed to remove the ratification requirement.
Agreed.
And I, for one, wouldn't take action to ratify that change, so the, the...
Well, is it premature to get them involved until that board action actually?
It may be...
Because they're, they're trying to do it within a month period to seat new members.
Yeah.
And my, my fear is they'll go ahead and seat them, and then we're going to end up with getting a lot more legally...
And, and I am, I am concerned about that ratification component. I am also sensitive to the, where this all came from.
Right.
Which is, the initial discussion about Geaga County was, when I learned, that, going back to Medina County setup, which I'm much more concerned about, that the designation where it says County Commissioner, and then it says County Commissioner, parentheses Township, County Commissioner, parentheses City, the way apparently in recent history that's been interpreted is that the commissioners, once that, once that parenthetical is added, we no longer have any say in NOACA's mind on who fills that seat. It is the, the, this designated city representative or this designated township representative. And that, and that is concerning, too, because I, I would have always interpreted that as up to this board to say, well, we're going to shift the delegation that we send up there, but because that's in the bylaws, they weren't, the, the, because it's in the code of regulations, there, any changes to that would require ratification. And so, the, the latitude of saying, well, it's the county commissioners or their designee as designated by this board, I think would be the more appropriate way to handle it. It, it's, it's a, it's kind of an add-on to the bigger question, but I think that's a change that would be more likely to be ratified, too.
Well, I, it's, I haven't, not having seen it, I, I, at least for this county, want to make sure clearly that the county engineer always has a designated seat, regardless of the wishes of the, the three commissioners, frankly.
Right.
Or two out of the, the three, because...
Right.
I think that, like I said, as a transportation planning organization...
Yep.
...has been from the start. Now, I was around in 97, first got on the board and, and involved, that at one point in time, it was three seats for Medina, three seats each commissioner, and they would have an alternate. What was it, and by tradition, ended up being, one was a township, one was municipal representative, and, and one being the commissioner. And then we, a couple of years later, we then changed it to, and with, with the modification that was approved, that, that would have a designated one that literally was, the voting member actually was not the commissioner...
Right.
But was, but it was still approved by the Board...
Yeah.
...of Commissioners.
And I would...
The municipal, township, yeah.
I, I just always found that surprising, because of the wording. It, it, it's, it's strange to me, just from a drafting standpoint, that it would reference the commissioners, individual commissioners, one, two, and three, if those seats weren't actually able to be filled by commissioners, because their, their interpretation of that language was, once we put that parenthetical in, they weren't able to be filled by commissioners anymore, so they're really not commissioner seats. That, to me, is not a, a great way of drafting that, because when I first got on the board and read that, I thought, oh, they're serving, like you say, almost like a, like a primary alternate. It's how, the, the primary member is actually an alternate for the board, for the, for the other two commissioners.
Right.
That's not how it's been interpreted. It's been, this is the board member, and the commissioners essentially no longer have a seat barring further board action. I'm not, I don't like that, and that's, but, but do I think that that can be changed without ratification? That, I think that's the, the bigger discussion we're going to have at the December meeting.
Back, back then, I think you were, saw when I went to the Governance Committee, that traditionally, each county kind of determined what its own composition was.
And that would make perfect sense to me.
And that, that's, at that point in time, that was agreeable language for us, and it may, it kind of reflected it. Lorraine County has their own circumstance, and it's certainly kind of a county that's changed. They went from a commissioner form of government to a county executive with a county legislature, they had to modify that.
Yep.
And, as well as they have those, those planning districts that they, and it, and that NOACA ends up facilitating a role of electing or selecting individuals to sit on the NOACA board, just as a mechanism, but every county kind of determined how it was represented, but I, I think we ought to certainly stand firm on the ratification issue.
Yeah, that's.
It requires all five, and we, and we, I think we need to be ready to act quickly to make sure that that is not undermined.
Right, because I, from, from my interpretation of the, the language, the, the modification, or the proposed modification, that ratification language, it's that the old, you know, once the toothpaste is out of the tube, it doesn't go back in very easy, and, and there's no limitation on how that could be administered, or limitation on the types of changes. You could change the entire voting structure, or the formula for, for board seats and not require ratification.
I don't understand a world where any of the counties outside of Cuyahoga would vote for that.
Well, there's an expedience. Lake County, Lake County is the one that's pushing this now. Before it was Geogga, now Lake is joining.
But it just doesn't make any sense. I, I think it takes away the power from.
It does. It protects, it does. That's what my argument was, my argument is basically, it protects the rights of the smaller counties.
Yeah.
To require that ratification.
That's what I said, I don't understand why any county would.
Why would we want to give that up?
Yeah, I, I haven't gotten a good answer for that yet, so we're on the same page as far as that's concerned.
Okay, all right.
Anything else?
Uh, let me see. No, that was, that was enough. Enough for now.
Okay. It just seems like those NOACA conversations are always extended, aren't they?
Yes.
And then, the only thing I had to add, you, you'd mentioned the candlelight walk.
Yeah, we, yeah, yeah.
It was a great, we were there for the tree lighting, always a great time, and then the pictures, CVB had some great pictures of the courthouse lit up.
Oh, yeah, with the fireworks behind it.
Oh, yeah. So, it really is a great spectacle that they do for that, and so, thanks to everybody with the city who put that together, and everybody from, you know, our, our facilities, folks obviously have to lean into that, too, to, to, to kind of help accommodate, so.
Sure.
It was a great, great event and great weekend. So, with that, if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to go into executive session, consider the appointment of a public official.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Swedick, yes. Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes, and just, I meant to mention this before we went into executive session, we will adjourn this meeting from there, but we do have an 11 o'clock special meeting that we'll reconvene in here. It won't be broadcast, but we will be reconvening in here to discuss the Chippewa wastewater treatment planned upgrades. So, that will be an 11 separate special meeting, in addition to the one that we will adjourn out of executive session later this morning. Thank you.